Okay, I'm gonna call this committee of the whole meeting to order and ask council if there's any disclosure of pecuniary interests. Scanning the room, seeing none. Move on to presentations and announcements. Before I do, I just wanted to send a huge congratulations to councillor Rob Black. Councillor Rob Black, the County Award Five councillor, has been appointed to be a senator, a Canadian senator. So that's awesome news. Couldn't happen to a better person. Full of integrity. It was a pleasure to serve with councillor Black on county council. And so that's exciting for him and his family to start this new adventure. So congratulations from Centre Wellington and from this town council on that awesome appointment. In the Wellington advertiser, there's, it talks a little bit about the background to this appointment. And he's only the fifth Wellington County resident who's been a senator, and the first one since 1951. So if I look around the room, that's before most of us here were born. So that's exciting. And so, yeah, so congrats to councillor Black. First thing that we have on the agenda is presentation, healthcare recruitment and retention. We have Dr Sarah Gower here. Welcome. Seems like we've done this before.
The button, ooh, is that on? Perfect, okay. Sorry, I feel like there's usually a bit more of a lead up before I appear, but here we go. That's very exciting, though. I thought, I was gonna try to work in some kinda, yeah, I won't, some kind of Maple Leafs joke, but it's not a senator Maple Leaf, it's not really gonna work. I'll leave it alone. Okay. Yeah, exactly. It's been a long day. So, my name is Sarah Gower. I'm a family doctor here in town, just across the street in Alora. And I think I have met many of you before, but not all of you. So thank you very much for having me again today. I am here representing the Retention and Recruitment Committee from Groves, which is actually the Central Wellington area Health Professional Recruitment and Retention Committee. So it was initially started as a way to help recruit and then retain health professionals, so physicians, but also nurses and all other kinds allied healthcare professionals to the whole Centre Wellington area. And we draw from quite a wide variety of players from Centre Wellington, East Garifra and Wellington North, including both Mary and Andy, who are here with us. And thank you guys so much for ongoing participation with our committee. So we have certainly been, I'm a family physician, I also work at the hospital in Fergus, as most all of us do here in town. I deliver babies there, and then I follow my inpatients as well. My husband's a family physician here as well, and he does emergency room work and anesthesia. We've been here for about, just over eight years. So just for our background. So in terms of recruitment this year, our big accomplishment has been recruiting our new internal medicine specialist. Specialists are hard to come by in rural areas. They aren't trained in a generalist way very often these days. They like to sub-specialize and be in areas in the city where they're gonna see a lot of very specific problems and not maybe a wide variety that they would in a rural area. But we've recruited Dr Ben Nguyen, who's been excellent. Some of you may have met him already. He's quickly becoming a favorite with staff and patients, really sweet guy, very knowledgeable across a wide discipline. And internal medicine is basically, we like to say, anywhere from the neck to the knees, and maybe a little bit beyond as well sometimes. So it's pretty much anything that's not actually surgical. And he really has a wide breadth. He came to us, into our attention about six months before the end of his training, his five-year training. And so he actually tailored the last few months of his training to areas that we said would be more useful or that we find deficits in in the area. So he's very committed to be here, and he's just been great. We also include education of anyone. We take a lot of trainers, learners of all types, nursing students, pharmacy students, physician students of all levels in their training. And a new thing we started doing this year was having a Take Your Kid to Work Day for grade nine students. We couldn't exactly take them into the operating room, for example, but what we did instead was set up stations where they could get skills. They learned how to intubate dummies, like put breathing tubes into mannequins. They learned how intravenouses work. They practiced their sewing, all these sort of fourteen, fifteen-year-olds. So that was a really exciting thing to see. And again, hopefully gets them into the idea that this is an interesting career for them to have lifelong. Looking ahead, where, one thing we're working on is starting to get a true sense of what our actual number of unattached patients are. So these are patients who live in their, or people who live in the area, who either don't have a physician at all, or we're starting to try to find people who have a physician, but it's not a local physician. It's someone, maybe they've moved here from Mississauga, they've kept their Mississauga family physician, but don't have a local one, and it's getting unfeasible to drive back and forth. There is a provincial registry, which is kept, called Healthcare Connect. But to be on that, you have to be de-rostered. So you have to have signed a paper with your regular initial family physician, saying that you're no longer on their roster. And there's a bit of a misconception that that means you're actually kicked out of their office. You're not. So I will de-roster someone who moves to Niagara, say, but I will still continue to see them and follow them until they find a new physician in Niagara. But some physicians either don't do that, or aren't aware that that's an option, or patients aren't aware that that's an option. They'll remain on their original physician's list in Mississauga, so they appear in our area as if they have a family physician, but they don't have anyone local. So that's something we're working on, is trying to capture that number and see exactly what our numbers are, as we continue to recruit new family physicians and are looking for what their sort of patient base would be. And then the other new thing we're working on, especially this next year too, is looking at forward to the new hospital and making sure that physicians have clinic space as that hospital is built. So right now, there's a, our specialists and surgeons are, some of our specialists and both of our surgeons are actually housed within the hospital. Their clinic space is in the building. And a lot of, a number of our family physicians are fairly close to the hospital, and lots of us would like to remain close to the hospital if possible. So just trying to make sure that that continues to happen. There's a number of leases coming up around both Fergus and Alora for physicians who've been in buildings for a long time, trying to just make sure that they have places to go as those leases end, and helping with retention that way is another thing that we're working on this year. Any questions at all?
Questions from council? Councillor Morris?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Sarah, just a question regarding the unattached patients. I would assume that probably the big reason for there being a group of unattached patients, as well as the travel, as you mentioned earlier, is the, there are more patients than there are doctors to serve them. That's probably the biggest reason. But what are the other lesser reasons for there being such a large group of unattached patients?
So it's interesting. When I first came here eight years ago, there was a list kept at the hospital. It used to be kept at the hospital by volunteers. And when we first came, that list had about 800 people on it. So we took quite a few of those people, and then the list kind of varied over the years. Currently, on the government list, there's about 100 patients. So it's actually not that many, you know? And it really does not outnumber, I mean, they are waiting, for sure, and you know, we're all quite busy, but we do open up our practices periodically and take, we try to take people off that list. I think the bigger problem is the mismatch that we have between people who are not on that list, but still consider themselves to not have a family doctor. And so that's, it's a tricky balance, because say that we got two new physicians who are interested, family physicians who are interested in coming to town, but we say, well, there's only a hun, they say, how many people are on your list? And we say, well, there's 100. And so then, it's very difficult to recruit, even though we know, we all know in our heads that there's more than that going on, but we don't have an actual number to give them. So it's actually a pretty big part of the puzzle, is the people who are not on that list, for whatever reason. I don't know if that answers your question, but...
Not completely. I just wondered if there were other factors besides the, you know, the ratio of doctors to patients? If there were other factors for people not being serviced? Like, is there? I don't know. I'm just asking.
No, it's a good question. I mean, I would say in most smaller communities, and ours included, most of us don't keep sort of open lists where you can just come anytime, partly because in a smaller town that can lead to people switching physicians quite often between us, which we don't want to encourage for different reasons. And then I think, you know, there's always a certain number of people who are interested in a regular physician that just don't get on lists like that or aren't interested. And then it's probably just that, yeah, we just don't, it's hard to recruit a whole extra body without a decent number to sort of have, could let them start up their own practice, you know, and feel confident they're gonna have a good practice. But it would be also difficult for us to absorb as a group a big number like that all at once. So it's kind of this delicate balance. Yeah.
Councillor Lloyd?
Thanks, Mr Mayor. So on behalf of Centre Wellington, we appreciate what happens in our medical world here, and all the doctors that do such a great job in servicing our residents. Just to say, another little point of what our little committee has done is also in the retention and trying to have some positive things. We're, we've been very pleased to be able to support a little bit of a redo of a, after, what is that, an overnight call for physician's room, and also a second floor nursing station rebuilt. So, you know, while we have the efforts of going out and looking for new physicians, which are very important to our community, we also want to in some way make life a little more bearable for those that are working hard and long shifts. And just another note that we are, as a community, grateful for those that are not catching the flu and able to keep working when these epidemics seem to be growing through our community and through our province as well with influenza. So thanks for all the hard work that you do, and all of our physicians. We appreciate, and healthcare professionals.
Great, thanks, Mary.
Thanks, Councillor Lloyd. And you raised a good point there, Councillor Lloyd. It's called the Recruitment and Retention Committee, so that's a reason for that. So appreciate all the work that you do, Dr Gower. We also have Alison Armstrong here, and we also have the committee chair, Karen Welsh here. So if you, there's any other questions, you can talk to them now, or you can send them in for emails, and we really appreciate the work that they do, because, I mean, when I moved back into this area, I was one of those 800. So it was good that, it's good that we are making a huge, huge step in that, in positive direction. So thanks very much for coming today.
Great, thanks very much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have a confirmation of the agenda, recommendation that the council, the township of Centre Wellington, confirm the agenda for its meeting held February 20th, 2018. Mover for that recommendation? Councillor Van Luin, seconded by councillor Fisher, all in favor? And then that's carried. Moving on to our first report under section five, a demolition of a listed heritage property. And we have our planner, Mariana here. Welcome, Mariana.
Thank you. Through you, Mary Linton. The owner of the property at 550 James Street in Fergus has submitted a notice of intent to demolish the dwelling on the property. The property is located on the east side of James Street, partway between Forfar Street and Garifra Street East, as you can see on the map. The property is currently listed on the municipal heritage register as a non-designated property, and as such, the Ontario Heritage Act provides council with 60 days' notice to consider the request. Staff in the heritage committee visited the property with the owner. We were granted access to the interior as well, and we commissioned research from the archives. The heritage assessment that was conducted indicates that although the property is likely quite old, circa 1870, which could not be confirmed, there is insufficient historical information or physical value to warrant heritage designation at this time. So staff in the heritage committee do not oppose demolition and recommend that a demolition permit be approved. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. And there's some photos up on the screen there, if you'd like.
Thanks, Mariana. Councillor McQueen?
Thanks, Kelly. I guess the only question really I have is, are we absolutely sure that there isn't a log cabin hiding under the surface there? We've been caught there before, so...
Yes, thank you. Through you, no, it is a wood frame building. The committee, as I said, had access to the interior as well, so we confirm that through the depth of the window sills and that it is not a log cabin underneath.
Councillor McQueen?
Thanks, Kelly. Just one other question, and this is more of a practice question, I guess, than anything else, but I see that we're requesting that the owner keep a photo documentation and that we, they try to salvage as much material for reuse as possible. Is this a standard thing for all demolitions, or is this just for this particular demolition? And if so, why isn't it a standard?
Yes, through you, it is a standard clause that we like to include as part of our recommendation, just so the owner is aware and to be able to salvage as much as possible. Yes.
Councillor Morris?
Just as a follow-up to that question, Mariana, why is the same criteria not applied to the 560 demolition, which is coming up next?
Through you, the property at 560, which is next on the agenda, as you mentioned, is not a listed heritage building. So this one, that falls under different legislation in terms of our demolition control bylaw, but this one falls under the Ontario Heritage Act because it's listed, so there are 60 days provided to review this one, rather than 30 under the demolition control.
Councillor Lloyd?
Thanks, Mr Mayor. How did we get this property on the heritage register? Was it an original request, or was it chosen by the committee?
Through you, no, it was added last year, actually, in June, by the committee in terms of the research that was done. It was heavily based on year-built, so assessment data that we collected on properties in the township, and then we reviewed them. So we visited the sites, took photographs, and looked through those on a case-by-case basis. And this one was decided to be added just because of the age.
Anything else from council? Okay, I read the recommendation. That the council of the township of Centre Wellington not object to the demolition of the structures at the listed property municipally known as 550 James Street, Fergus, based on the property's cultural heritage value and/or interest, and that the property municipally known as 550 James Street, Fergus, be removed from the township's municipal register of cultural heritage properties. And that council of the township of Centre Wellington approve the demolition of the dwelling located at 550 James Street, Fergus pursuant to section 33 of the Planning Act in accordance with bylaw 2007-021. And that the owner provides, Centre Wellington, complete photo documentation of the entire structure prior to its demolition, and be encouraged to salvage for reuse as much material as possible in order to divert it from landfill. Move for that recommendation. Councillor Fisher, seconded by councillor Lloyd, all in favor? And that's carried. Thanks, Mariana. Moving on to 52, demolition control for 560 James Street, former town of Fergus. And that's coming to us from Randy, chief building official. Welcome, Randy.
Good afternoon, Mayor Linton, members of council. This property is right next door to the one that Mariana just spoke to you about. The home was constructed in the year 1900. It's not recorded, though, in the township of Centre Wellington Municipal Heritage Register, and it's not designated under the Ontario Heritage Act. It's a 1316 square foot, single detached dwelling, and they would like to remove the entire structure, including the foundation, to redevelop in the near future. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have regarding this one.
Questions from council? Councillor McQueen?
Thanks, Kelly. This is kind of a follow-up to the questions Fred and I just had for 550. Why do we not encourage the salvage and reuse of material for this home, the same as we did the previous home?
Well, we certainly always recommend to people that they be cognizant and reuse, or, you know, repurpose appropriately. But there's no legislation in place that we can certainly require that as a condition of a demolition permit. But we do recommend, you know, windows, things of that nature, doors, like take them to the reuse center, that type of thing. I certainly always recommend that to people, but there's, there's nothing in, you know, certainly the building code or any legislation that we have that we can demand that of people. But it's certainly always recommended.
Councillor Fisher?
Thank you. Is this just happenstance that these two properties are side by side, or are they connected in any way?
They're owned by the same gentleman who intends to redevelop the properties. So they are connected.
Councillor Kitchell?
Is this an intensification redevelopment? So do you know, do you know what's going to be going on those?
At this point in time, I do not know what's happening with the properties. As far as I know, they'll, they'll be rebuilt. He's not in a dramatic hurry to rebuild, but at the same time, in order to stay within the timeframes of development charge credits and whatnot, it will happen in the near future as opposed to the distant future.
Anything else from council? Okay, I read this recommendation, that the council of the township of Centre Wellington approves the issuance of a demolition permit to demolish the single detached dwelling located at 560 James Street, former town of Fergus Plant 55, Park Lot 3. Mover for that recommendation? Councillor Lloyd, seconded by? Councillor Van Luin, all in favor? And that's passed. Thanks, Randy. 5.3, Growing the Green Belt in the Outer Ring. Public consultation report from our managing director of planning. Welcome, Brett.
Thank you, Mayor Linton. I'm gonna stand up and hopefully not lose my voice while I'm up here, like lots of people. I'm fighting a cold. So the province is consulting on a study area for potential expansion of the green belt that they're calling Growing the Green Belt in the Outer Ring. So the green belt has been around since 2005. The green belt protects 810,000 hectares of land from urban development. It includes green space, farmland, towns and villages, forests, wetlands and watersheds. Parts of Wellington County are in the green belt, in Puss Lynch and Aaron, but as of now, there is none in Centre Wellington. There's been some talk about growing the green belt since 2008. In 2008, there was a criteria for expanding the green belt. It included supportive council resolutions, physical connection to the current green belt, and demonstrating that it would support the growth plan. Then in 2015, the coordinated review of the growth plan, the green belt plan, the Okrem Minjes Moraine Plan, and the Niagara Escarpment Plan, they had an advisory panel that was chaired by David Crombie. And they made a recommendation that there be a provincially-led process to expand the green belt beyond its current boundaries using a systems approach. So in the 2017 green belt plan, there was some additional land incorporated, based on municipalities having asked. And they also incorporated urban river valleys. In addition to that, in the growth plan and in the green belt plan, there are policies that talk about growing it into the outer ring. So under the growth plan, there's the Greater Golden Horseshoe, and then in the area, the great, the GTA areas are part of what's called the growth centers, and then municipalities like Wellington County, Brant County, Dufford County, we are considered to be the outer ring. And up till now, the green belt has only been in those, largely centered on those areas that are the inner municipalities in the green belt, and this study is looking at the potential to expand it to the outside. So we've, township staff have been involved in some phone briefings that happened early on when this came out in December. We've been to provincial consultation meetings that happened in January for municipal staff. And we've received some input from members of the public. The county has done comments, which are in your package, and comments from all municipalities are due on March the 7th. Since the green belt would now expand into Centre Wellington, and the map of the green belt area is up on the screen, not easy to read because of the orientation, but if you look at the area that's in dark blue, and in your package, that dark, dark blue area is the Orangeville Moraine, which is the area that's proposed to be added that's in Impact Centre Wellington. So that, that is this map, figure four, study area for potential green belt expansion. The provincial sessions explained kind of the building blocks, and it's focused on moraines and sand and gravel deposits. Alicia, if you could just forward to the next one. This is one of the building block maps. So the building block map, this one is also as part of the package. It's appendix one, study area, building block map. It outlines the moraines and the sand and gravel areas that are part of the rationale for the study area. The province explained to us that they used mapping of the Orangeville Moraine from the Ontario Geological Survey, and as well as provincial mapping of sand and gravel deposits to come up with this map. And then secondarily, if you can go to the next one, Alicia, this one are, this map is the building blocks that relate to cold water streams and wetlands. Again, this is using provincial data to look at, it was explained to us, the density of cold water streams and the density of wetlands. So the number of wetlands per acre or a given land area, and the number of cold water streams in a given area dictated how they came up with this, with this boundary. And then I think there's a one kilometer kind of buffer added around the outside of it. The next map kind of zooms in on what it looks like in kind of the Centre Wellington context. So you can see, and this map is in your package too. So this, we just took, using GIS, we traced the provincial study area. So you can see that it includes a large area east of county, of Highway 6, and a little bit south and east of Fergus, out towards, towards Bellwood, and includes kind of the northern part of Lake Bellwood. Today, that area is mostly farmland, obviously, some recreational uses with the Lake Bellwood and the cottages, but otherwise, it's prime agricultural land. You can see the Speed River is in there, and so the wetlands and things associated with the headwaters of the Speed River would be included in that area. So there's, the Orangeville Moraine and the area in Centre Wellington, that's part of seven different things that are included in the study area. The Waterloo and Paris Galt Moraine Complex, the Escarpment Area Moraines, the Oro Moraine, Nahtuasaga River Corridor, Simcoe County Surface Water and Recharge Areas and Catchment Areas and Wetlands West of Minising, Ontario. Those make up in total the seven things, but of course, it's the Orangeville Moraine that includes us. So it includes moraines, sand and gravel deposits, wetlands and cold water streams, as I said. Just a little bit of commentary on the, on the methodology used. They've explained that they use provincial data sets to come up with their boundary. The building blocks are sort of what I showed you. With respect to urban development, one of the things they've asked in the consultation is about how this green belt might impact on urban expansion. The way the green belt reads today, lands that are outside the green belt are not able to expand onto lands that are inside it. Because of our growth forecast, there is a possibility, we don't know, we won't know until the comprehensive review, and we know what our future density and intensification targets are. We may need to expand the urban boundary to meet the growth targets, but depending on the density, we also may not. Some of the land that is included in this study area, and again, I stress that the province is saying it's just a study area, it's not a green belt boundary. They haven't made any commitment timing-wise to actually expand the green belt, nor have they given any timing of when this study is supposed to take place. You know, there's areas that we might look at for urban expansion would be included in this study area, because they can be serviced from existing services on the east side of Fergus. And similarly, the sportsplex is on the boundary of the study area. So if we were in the future, as part of an urban expansion, to want to also include room to expand the sportsplex, under the green belt policies, if they stay the way they are today, we may be limited in our ability to do that. Apart from that, we don't see development in this area, because it is all Apart from that, we don't see development in this area because it is all, as of today, prime ag, agricultural uh, land. Um, so that's one of the questions they've asked about uh, is urban expansion and that brings back uh, a little bit of concern from municipalities about the timing of this uh, exercise. Uh, it's unclear about the timing, but we're being asked to comment on the study area, we're being asked to comment on how it might impact future urban settlement growth. When we are, because of the growth plan, mandated to do a municipal comprehensive review at the county level, at least by the year two thousand and twenty-two. And it would, municipalities, I think are clear that they would, they would like to have that exercise complete before that the province starts talking about expanding the green belt. Um, because we have to do, it is called a comprehensive review and there's a thirteen part test in the, in the uh, growth plan for municipalities that want to expand the urban boundary. In, there's another discussion about whether there are other data sets or information sources that uh, that should have been looked at. So I just want to draw your attention to um, a map that's been out there in the public that, that started back when the green belt consultation, Alicia, if you can go to the next one. Um, this is uh, you can see the areas that are in the kind of lighter colored blue. It's a proposal that the Green Belt Foundation and many other community groups have supported um, to expand the green belt even further than what the province has provided, and if you look at on the map, the, the area that says uh, Wellington, uh, right there, but kind of, that label goes right through the middle of Fergus and Alora, it looks like. So there's additional area in that lighter shade of blue that uh, this group is promoting as being, should be part of the, the study or consideration for future green belt expansion, but in the provincial proposal, it's not. Um, so I've heard from members of the public here advocating for the uh, the green belt expansion study to include those other areas. It's uh, at the scale of the map, it's hard to comment on what kind of impact it would have, but it does go across the top of the current urban boundaries of Fergus and Alora and would connect over to the uh, the Almyra Moraine and connect to Waterloo, so we would have even further areas, uh, if this became part of the green belt or, or part of um, a stud, future green belt that would limit our urban expansion in that direction as well. Again, as of now, we don't know whether we're even going to be in a position where urban expansion is justified. But I want to put this, point this out, that this is out there and it's not part of the current study area, although there's quite a bit of support community wide, I think, for this kind of proposal. One of the dilemmas of the timing of this um, study area exercise is that it came out in December. Consultation sessions were in uh, January and comments are due on March the seventh. So, most municipalities aren't going to be making comments uh, or releasing their comments publicly until we get, kind of till the end of February, when they get to their council meetings at the end of February. So what I haven't seen so far, apart from the county, and I think I've just seen the cities today, which won't go to their council till uh, the city of Guelph till uh, uh, February twenty-sixth, they comments are similar to the county in that they're suggesting that the policy framework is already loaded with water protection policies and that um, municipalities would prefer to get through their growth planning exercises before we had talk about expanding the green belt. Um, but I haven't seen, this proposal would, would impact municipalities beyond Centre Wellington and also into Waterloo, like Wowich Township, the Almyra Moraine. I haven't seen anything from, from those municipal councils as to how they feel about whether this area should be added to the study. Um, it seems like this proposal has been around for quite a bit of time, I don't know the scientific basis for it in terms of, with the provincial stuff. I've shown you the building block maps and those were presented and they've told us where the data came from, I don't have access to that information for this proposal. But it's, it's uh, it's out there if the province were uh, interested in adding, adding to the green belt study area. At the session I attended, their rationale for not including these areas were that they're not contiguous to the current green belt today. When, and they're, the, the minute, the provincial study area was focused on areas that were already adjacent to the current green belt, so if you go back to um, the first map, Alicia, you see that all of, all of the areas, the, the kind of lighter blue that runs south of Guelph and KW, that's the, the Waterloo Galt Paris Moraine, they're all contiguous with the green belt already. And the Orangeville Moraine in the dark blue, uh, that, they're all contiguous. And as are, when you move to the north, the other seven areas, they're all contiguous to the existing uh, green belt. Just uh, some implications to think about if uh, if green belt expansion does happen in the future. Under the current policies, uh, there would be some policy provisions in the green belt plan that would impact uh, farms potentially, um, farm expansion, depending on if, if it came up. Uh, we don't know today whether the area that gets expanded, if it does, might be protected countryside or natural environment in the green belt, but if it does, if it's natural environment, then there's some policy implications for uh, expansions of farm buildings and things like that that could come into play. Um, as I noted earlier, expanding the green belt, or expanding urban areas onto land that's in the green belt, there's uh, restrictions on that. It could impact us, as I noted, it could impact future uh, sportsplex expansion. Um, there's also a policy provision that uh, precludes extending services from outside the green belt to areas that are in the green belt. And one of my observations is that we've got Bellwood Lake kind of half in and half out of the study area. And if it were ever came to the point where we had to uh, extend sanitary services out there because of some of the, the issues that uh, they may have with quality and of septic systems on the lake, that would be one of the potential issues that, that could arise. The green belt discourages extending uh, services out to, to land that are in the green belt. So that's a specific circumstance to us that may be unusual everywhere else, but um. So in the uh, the county's report, they do go into a little bit more detail about what the policy implications are, having, having kind of dealt with um, having the green belt in Pussland and Aaron for quite some time. The county's uh, report does go through some of the implications. It's on page fifty-two of the uh, agenda package, has a table that kind of describes some of the impacts, so for instance, there's alterations in the green belt to the normal county severance policy. There's restrictions on adding second units if you're in the green belt versus if you're not, so there's just kind of minor policy differences between the green belt and what would otherwise be the policy in the county OP for the areas that are outside of the green belt. Um, so my report, my comments are really just to say that uh, um, we submit our municipal comments to the ministry by March the seventh, I think. It's a study area and so, I don't, I think at this point, there's not much to quibble about the fact that they're going to do a study area, it's sort of, I think they're going to do the study, so they're looking specifically for input into the study area. What they've produced, they've provided the rationale for it, it is a fairly large area already that's getting added. Uh, potentially being added and being looked at for addition to the green belt, so. Um, my recommendation is just that we receive the report, submit it to the municipal affairs. I know they will hear from lots of others about the uh, further expansion of, of the green belt.
So, so uh, just to summarize a little bit Brett, um, because there is a lot of interest in the community about this. From the very beginning of the process, we're, they're just talking about the, what the study area, what the scope of the discussion should be.
Right, that's right.
And that's what the comments from the township are related to.
That's right.
Council, uh, questions from council? Council Lloyd?
Thank you, um, so Brett, you will be our designate that will be going to all of these meetings coming up, or will we be having someone who is that's part of their role going forward?
Meetings have already happened, so like the consultation sessions that were held with staff were in January. There's been a couple of other larger public open house sessions, I think, and there was one in Orangeville, one in uh, Guelph in mid-February or early February. Um, but the consultation period closes on March the seventh, so then the province will go from there, as I say, they haven't indicated at all what their timing is, even to do the study, let alone taking it from a study to an actual green belt expansion.
I just want to follow up with that, um, so are uh, developers involved in this consultation as well, is um, it does affect some of the areas that we have maybe identified as potential growth? Um, with our growth management study and have, has the province reached out to developers or to consult with them?
I don't think they've reached out to developers in any way other than that there's a general consultation with the general public, which would include developers. I mean, I know that some of the developers locally know about this uh, proposal. Um, but whether they've been actively sought out by the province, I don't think so. The consultation sessions that were held in Orangeville and, and uh, and uh, Guelph were open to anyone to attend.
Council Ketchus?
Thank you Mayor, um, I have a few questions about this. I'm wondering if there's any uh, uh, farm uh, operations or rural planners that are involved in this process? That's my first question.
Rural planners in the sense of um, well, I've seen, I think I've seen uh, positive and negative comments made about the green belt, I mean, what we haven't seen yet are any comments on this particular proposal from the Federation of Agriculture, for instance. Um, I know that there are uh, some people that, uh, quotes I've seen where the green belt also protects agriculture, so it's more of a permanent protection of agricultural land as much as it, as is environmental protection. So, from the point of view that it uh, inhibits prime agricultural land from being used for something other than agricultural uses, it's a good thing. But at the same time, it does have policy constraints within the green belt that have implications for agricultural operations that want to expand buildings. There may, if there's a natural heritage component to what the, what the green belt might be, the natural heritage area that's included in the green belt, then there are implications for that for agriculture, but what we haven't seen are any specific comments from the Federation of Agriculture. Um, I think, again, it's part of the timing, a lot of these groups won't meet collectively until the end of February to be able to have had a, um, a chance to weigh in. I haven't seen anything as well from our local Federation of Agriculture as to how they feel it impacts them.
Council Ketchus?
I'm, I'm wondering why this wasn't announced or information about this at the Bellwood Town Hall. This, uh, this is actually quite a big thing for Bellwood to uh, have this, because basically there'll be, their, their development's frozen and all the farms are going to be affected. I have data on farming that is quite, it's quite serious impacts on the farming operations and I'm sort of wondering why we didn't even mention this when we knew about it.
Well, I guess I have to answer that one because I put together a presentation for Bellwood. Um, it didn't go, this study didn't go to council yet, so I imagine that it should be received for information for us and as Brett said, it's at the very beginning part of the process, so. What, what um, what action we can take out of this or what potential action the township could move forward with is completely questionable right now, so to bring it up, I didn't see the need. Any?
Just also, we do know that the Federation of Agriculture are seeking out input from their associate, from their members, uh, so that is a process they're going through and the province is reaching out as that, as well to those, so this is a provincial process, it's not, we're not leading this process. We being asked for comments, uh, both the county and the township are writing those comments. Uh, and I know as Brett mentioned, the city of Guelph is providing those today. Um, this is again, just a, a discussion to see whether the province is going to initiate a study based on current data that they currently have. They have not stated they're going to draw these lines, this is just saying if they were to go to a study, um, what are our comments with regards to that?
Council Ketchus?
You know, I'm very disappointed because this has large implications for Ward Six and Ward Five. And just to inform the residents that this is coming up or that we're actually discussing this is a very important thing, even just to mention it, that we're getting this information, so that they could actually maybe make comments. The green belt has a large effect on agriculture. I live on a farm, I come from farming roots. And there are mixed feelings about what green belt does. But generally, for a farmer, two thirds of their assets are their land. And the studies have shown that twenty-five percent, twenty to twenty-four percent, they get less when you're in the green belt for your value of your land, so that has a huge implications. And that's why they should have been told that this, we're even considering or that they could make comments. The other thing is that there's lots of, in the document for the green belt, there is nothing about agriculture in that document, the five thousand word document, the green belt. And agriculture is very important to Centre Wellington. It's one of our core economic development, I sit on that agricultural uh, economic. The two thousand and nine study by the University of Guelph rural planner, Harry Cummings, detailed analysis of what happens between Greenland and outside Greenland has shown that farmers that do pigs, there's a thirty-one percent decline in the green belt and a fourteen percent outside the green belt. Beef cattle, twenty-four percent in the green belt and thirteen percent outside the green belt. Dairy farmers, thirteen to nine. It has implications for farmers' value, what happens in the green belt because there isn't an agricultural policy. And that's what I think that this council should make, is that we should have, and I will place the motion that we have an agricultural study with the green belt and an agricultural impact on actual farmers, because these are, what happens is, is that there is a browning of the green belt when the green belt goes in. The agricultural, actual real farmers, their operations decline with green belt. The big operations that already have all their land are fine, it's the small guy. The second thing about the green belt is that there is no study about housing affordability caused by the green belt. And that's the second thing that we should be studying as, is this, because this will impact our housing prices, which again, I'll talk to, uh, as the impact assessments at the same time. So I, I, I think that we should have brought this up at Bellwood. I think it's like one of those things that we could just have mentioned, that we were studying, that we got a study, that we got mentioned. Cause that's what our, those town hall meetings are for. They're to inform people about information and they're not just about what we've done. Anyway, uh, I'd like to make a motion, I'd like to make a motion that we study the impact of the green belt on farms and on development in, for housing affordability in Centre Wellington. That's my motion.
Well, that's, I mean, thank, I mean, you put a motion in front and anybody can do that, but it's really not part of the agenda. Um, we have, we, it's not fair to rest of the councillors that we haven't had any idea of, of what you're going to say here, so how are we supposed to have a, a regular discussion about a motion that just came out of the blue like that?
Well, it's for us to study to make in the future. Because we're going to be making recommendations, this is part, we only have till March the seventh.
But this is, this is like, how, our planner has just gone through the process of explaining to us that all we're talking about here is comments on the proposed green belt expansion study area. It's not about expansion of the green belt. All that stuff is in the province's hand. We've just been asked to, to respond by March seventh about the proposed study area. We're not even talking about the benefits, the pros and cons of the green belt. That's not even part of the equation right now. So I don't understand how this motion is relevant.
It's relevant because we need to make these comments to pres, to protect farmers and those people that want buy. It's important that we make these comments to the province for, for the benefit of our residents. This is, this is, like, this has a large impact because what is our history?
Our history of, of planners is that they, once they get into the planning stage, personal things for, for, for individuals wanting to do anything, they don't count because it's all part of the whole planning dialogue. We've had that with the, you know, the kennels, we've had that for all these things. So it's in this preliminary stage that these, these things have to be put forward. That's when it has to be done. It's at the very early stage that this is considered. That's how, once you get back to, once we have the meetings, this is what's happening about the, you know, what, whatever, five years from now comes in, the green belt's coming to your area, oh, you, the comments can't come in, it's over. So it's at this stage, at this very largely stage, that this should be made.
Well, I'm just, I'm just trying to, I'm going to talk to uh our deputy clerk and CEO here. Um if council wishes uh staff to add comments related to some thoughts about potential green belt expansion, add those to our comments to the ministry. We can go ahead, if there's a second, or we can go ahead and do that. As long as, as long as the motion is clear, which it is in my mind. Do you want to speak to that, Councilman?
Thank you. Um I would agree with Councilor Kitcher that it is a, it's a big thing, it's going to affect um the Bellwood area for sure. One of the difficult things, that's reading through the documents, is it's not even clear what they're doing, when they're doing it, why they're doing it. I mean, it's like sending you a report to comment on with nothing. And in some ways, it's like, well, we're thinking about doing this, we're thinking about doing that. So I was actually going to say, well, what are they going to do with this? And when do we comment on the real, uh I'll call it the nuts and bolts of the matter as to what we want to see? When you get into, um and, and I share a bit of the concern where Councilor Kitcher says, we want to add those nuts and bolts so that they actually get into this somehow? And yet, it's not really the time. They're saying, okay, we're thinking about studying here. So you want to say, okay, well, if we're going to study it, we want to see you check this. But that's not what we're asking you. If, when you get there, we don't want to miss that opportunity.
Right.
So the question is, I don't see the harm of saying, can we add in a comment section, please ensure that this is done? Um I know it doesn't pertain, but I would uh, I would not be afraid to add something in the comments area. At the very least, we've covered it because ten years from now, if they actually get around to it, I'd like, like to ensure that we've done our part in that way.
And?
Just to add to that, the, kind of what we've chatted about here is if we include those as comments, um my concern that if we were to say those studies need to be completed, that that would be the onus is on us financially. I think we should be turning this back on to the province, saying it's part of their green bag, belt expansion. They should be investigating these issues with regards to the green belt, not necessarily just Center Wellington. Because we're talking about a number of large areas that they're impacting, rural, residential, farm properties. But this would be a part of a decision, not just for Center Wellington, but across, across these seven regions that they're studying and beyond.
I, I, I agree with you about that.
Council Kitcher.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I, I agree with you about that, that, that is not just Center Wellington's issue. But because this is in my area, uh and this is farming community and that is my concern about this. I do have uh, and I do have concerns about affordability housing. There are lots of studies that have said that green belts increase the prices and make housing unaffordable. And so that is another concern that I have. Um and so this is, those are the two concerns, and I think that is the comment. If we can put those in the comment, I'll withdraw my uh whatever. I, I, I'll keep that on there, that we have directions, add that to the comment section.
Is that a clear direction?
Yeah, yeah. I know there's a Fraser Institute study on the, on the housing affordability piece. Again, I would love to be able to stand here and I've shared county comments because I know the county's gone to their planning committee. The planning committee comments at the county, um you know, I think municipal staff, from what I've seen, and my, I would say my, my comments are neutral because this is a study area that we're being asked to comment on. The county's comments are also neutral, but they are pointing out concerns that the agricultural community is where the additional regulation is going to um to play a role in um day-to-day operations of farmers. It changes their severance policy and all those things. Those are noted in the county policy. I mean, and I would love to have been able to attach comments from uh the Federation of Agriculture. But because of the timing, I think we just haven't seen them yet. Um so what, both Wellington Federation of Agricultural and the Ontario Federation, I know they're talking about having their own discussions about this topic, so they're plugged into it. And I'm assuming then that the members that live in this area are plugged into it because they're members of the Federation of Agriculture as well. But again, they just, they haven't submitted any formal comments.
Yeah, I thi, I think, I mean, everybody around this room, in, in, in this room here recognizes that there's potential negative and positive impacts of extending the green belt. I mean, I think we all recognize that discussion is coming and that discussion has to come to council here. And um there needs to be a time for that. Um I just don't read it in the, in, in where we're at right now. I don't understand the place for it, but that's fine. Um I have a motion here, Councilor Kitcher, see if it suits. Now that the Council of Township Center Wellington direct staff to include comments to the Ministry of Municipal Affairs to recommend inclusion of potential impacts of the green belts and expansion on farmland and land values.
Yep, go ahead.
Uh farming operations and land values, because it's about staying into farming.
Expand, uh expansion of the green belt to farming operations and land values. Is that good? Does that work? Okay. Need a second there before we can have any more discussion on that one. Second there? Uh Councilman Allen, discussion, Councilor McLean?
I'm, I'm not sure that that wording captures home affordability. Land values doesn't necessarily translate directly to home affordability. It talks about land values for farming.
Why don't we get rid of all the words and just say potential impact of green belt expansion? Okay, let's go through it then. Farming operations, home affordability, and anything else? Or is that it? That's it? Okay, is that, so let me read it again. At the Council of Township Center Wellington, direct staff to include comments to the Ministry of Municipal Affairs who recommend inclusion of potential impacts of the green belt expansion on farming operations and home affordability. Is that, is that accurate? Far, farming operations, home affordability and land values. Farming operations, home affordability and land values. Good? Second there? You did already? Okay, sorry. All in favor? And that carries. What do you mean?
Councilor Mars?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um Brett, when I look over the report here, it, it seems to me that the the original spark, I guess, for this um study, because there's always been talk, apparently according to your report, since two thousand and seven or two thousand and eight about expanding the green belt. But in two thousand and fifteen, there was a committee chaired by David Crombie called the Two Thousand and Fifteen Coordinated Review of the Growth Plan for the Greater Golden Horseshoe, the Green Belt Plan, and so on. One of the main recommendations that came from that committee had to do with the protection of ecological and hydrological significant areas to prevent urbanization from destroying those areas. So as I read your report, and then in two thousand and seventeen, just before I go in further, in two thousand and seventeen in December, the province announced a public consultation process on an initiative entitled Protecting Water for Future Generations and Growing the Green Belt in the Outer Ring. So it seemed to me that the, the whole uh motivation for the study had to do with the protection of water supplies. As I read your report, I, I, I see your concerns here about the possibility of restricting urbanization or, or urban development into these areas. I don't see much in the way of commentary about our concern for our water supplies and our wetlands. And so I'm just wondering, can you explain why that area is left out of your report or not hardly mentioned in your report, since this is the main driver behind the whole study? Water is the main driver. So.
Right.
Um I just want to know why our report or your report here doesn't carry any of the concerns of Center Wellington? Because as we all know here at this horseshoe, water is a big topic around here. And so why aren't we pushing this to the province?
Well, water, water is a big topic. Again, I think the, the report is clear, and as you've noted, the reason why the province is doing this is because of the protection of water. My comments were responding to the specific things that the province asked for consultation on is what is the impact on your growth and your ability to meet those growth forecasts? And so I'm pointing out that we do have areas that are in the proposed study area that might be considered for future urban expansion. I guess the water issue in my report didn't highlight it because that's the, that's the framework of this whole thing, that the province is doing this in, with the recommendation and the goal that we need to protect. And the mapping is based on those things, the moraines, the wetlands, those cold water streams. That's what they want to protect. Um but there is, you know, there's a one kilometer buffer around all of the areas that they've added together. So I didn't focus specifically on those areas because I commented on the things that the province asked us to comment on. The overall overarching reason why they're doing this, and that's what it's called, protecting water for future generations. So it's not that I don't feel it's important. Obviously, that, that's the whole crux of this issue.
Councilor Mars?
Well, thank you for that. I just, I, I guess, as I look at this, um the province is consulting it, and I would think they're looking for the pros and cons of their proposal and their plans. So I, I see in your report the cons. In other words, if you do this, we're saying to the province, if you do this, we potentially could restrict uh urbanization in these areas. Or even to, for Councilor Kitcher's motion a few moments ago, if we do this, we could impact agriculture. Where is the, where is the support for the provincial motivation here? Where is, where is the statement from Center Wellington that we agree with the province that our protection of our water is vital and important to us? Why don't we have a supportive uh part in this report?
Well, again, I think that's the whole reason why we're doing this. The, the study's being done for water, the province is doing it. We have, we have water protection policies throughout uh the policy framework already. The green belt is there because of um the province wants to add areas that have hydrologic function to the green belt, um which is a good thing. But they've asked us to comment specifically on how it uh, how it might impact meeting our growth targets and, and meeting the objectives of the growth plan. So that's the only reason why I've laid that out. Um that's what the province asked us to consult on.
They asked, they asked you to consult on the proposed expansion study area, right? So the physical study area. The purpose behind the whole project is related to protecting our water. But the comments are about the area that they, that was the scope of the study area, correct?
Right, and they had the, they, they had questions that they were asking municipalities to comment on, weigh in on, and that was one of them. And they've also asked about what other areas could be considered, and that's kind of why I introduced the, the blue belt idea because it's not included in the study area. Other agencies, the Conservation Authority, again, we haven't seen those, their comments either. Significant groundwater recharge areas are included in the source protection plans, and they're part of what's made up the study as well.
Councilor McLean?
Thanks, Kelly. Um the second question, I think, asked by the province for your comment is, are there additional data sets or types of analysis that should be considered? And the Greenland Center Wellington proposal from a number of years back seems to fit like it may, may be a beneficial additional data set to suggest in that particular context.
Uh well, I've seen comments in support of the blue belt idea in relation to what's in the, in the study. I know uh there is some reference to the moraines in the, in the study. What the province is using of the mapping of this particular study area, um from the way it was explained, are kind of newer data sets that wouldn't have existed at the time Greenland's were doing their work because they're, they're using their own provincial um newly developed mapping of the cold water streams. And the Ontario Geological Survey did a study of the Orangeville Moraine. So whatever existed um back when, in two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, when Greenland's were doing all their work, um is newer today than it was then. But those areas um north of Fergus are, would support the blue belt idea more, more significantly, I would think.
Councilor Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Brett, there's a concern expressed in your report about the timing of this exercise. Uh I guess it's in relation to what we anticipate will be a county study of the comprehensive needs for land use density intensification for the whole county.
Right.
Do you want to just elaborate on that? I know it's in a paragraph there, but just to be absolutely clear, what is the nature of our concern about that?
So the growth plan, um which came out in July, took effect on July first of two thousand and seventeen, has a policy requirement. Um we know that we are going to get potentially density targets that are significantly higher, as high as, as high as eighty people and jobs per hectare. And uh the intensification target potentially as high as sixty percent um down the road. In order to uh ask for a lower target for density and intensification, municipalities have to go through this comprehensive review. Uh and that's the upper tier, that the county level that has to do it. They also have to go through the exercise of um determining how, whether they need to expand the urban boundary or what fits in the earth, the settlement areas throughout the county. They have until two thousand and twenty-two to do that. Obviously, if there's going to be a green belt expansion that uh impacts upon where that urban expansion, if needed, would or could go, um then that's something that should be able to be accounted for in the comprehensive review. But we don't know what the timing of this s, exercise is. So for municipalities to have uh complete the comprehensive review and at least know what their needs are, would be uh, it would be nice to have had that done before the green belt gets expanded. Or if we know the green belt is coming in the short term, for municipalities to know that, so that could play a role in their future allocation of growth or future density, looking at density targets. Um and that, it impacts Center Wellington in particular because the other municipalities in the county aren't in a position where the growth forecast to two thousand and forty-one might require urban expansion in Center Wellington, but that's not the case in the rest of the county. So that's an issue that's kind of unique to us. So that's an issue that's kind of unique to us in this equation.
Counsel Fisher?
Thank you. Just, so just to be clear, are we concerned so much about the timing of this particular study, which is the establishment of a study area? Or is the real concern about the timing of any potential green belt expansion that might come out of that? If that was to happen before we've done this comprehensive review?
Well, there's a little bit of both in that they're asking for us to comment on possible impacts that we can't yet determine because we haven't done the comprehensive. We, the questions the province is asking us, if this came when we had already done the comprehensive review, we'd be better positioned to answer them. But it, then there's also a bit of both. If they do proceed to actually expand the urban expansion, obviously, that's going to play a role in the future comprehensive review. And municipalities are just now laying out their capital plans of when this comprehensive review is going to happen. If there's a room we need to, needed to have left in there for the province to do this, uh, green belt expansion, it would be, it would be good to know that. But there's nothing here that, that mentions that, so. I don't think we're going to be able to stop doing the comprehensive review because if we have a deadline on when they have to be done.
Okay, I'll read the recommendation here, that the Council of the Township of Center Wellington receive report PLN two thousand and eighteen dash zero four dated February twentieth, two thousand and eighteen for information. And the report be submitted to the Ministry of Municipal Affairs. Yeah, yeah. And that the report be submitted to Municipal, uh, Ministry of Municipal Affairs as amended. We will for that recommendation. Counsel Macklin, seconded by Counsel Lloyd, all in favor? And that is passed. Thanks Brett. Onto five point four, Forfar Park Washroom. Report from our Director of Community Services, welcome Brian.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Recently, Mr. Eric Van Gruthy approached staff with his offer to supply, construct, and then donate an accessible washroom facility at Forfar Park. This would advance the timing of the washroom facility from two twenty-six to two eighteen. In return for his donation value of approximately fifty-five thousand, he would affix a sign at his cost advertising his business for a period of twenty years. We, Senator Wellington, would be responsible for obtaining the building permit connections to sewer water and hydro, and that would cost about five thousand dollars as a one-time cost. And Senator Wellington will be responsible for the ongoing maintenance and operation of the facility, as we will be the owner of this facility. Mr. Eric Van Gruthy is here with us today. I'd like to point out that through his efforts, he took the initiative to have the design rendering established that you see in front of you on the screen and has completed a complete set of drawings that, um, upon approval, are ready to hand to our building department for a building permit. I'm making these points because I'd like to point out that Mr. Van Gruthy has a great interest in this project. I'm sure it's certainly to promote his business, but more importantly, to show his civic engagement and willingness to move this project forward. As you know, Forfar Park is in access to a main trail, actually the Trans-Canada Trail through Senator Wellington. Yeah, it's just recently gone through an upgrade of a parking lot where the services actually for sewer water and hydro have been brought into this location. So the, that's why the connection costs are as low as they are because the services are already at this site. And that was even done before we anticipated this kind of timing of, of this facility. And you have the recommendations in front of you in my staff report.
Thank you very much, Brian. Love the look of the, the washroom for sure. Quick question of what happens if the name changes from Century Twenty-One to Century Thirty-One or something like that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We do have the say of what the sign looks like. So I think it's important with the rendering up there, this has been a discussion between staff and Mr. Van Gruthy. And the fact that I believe the sign is tastefully done, it's actually going to be face, you will see the sign from the street. But you will note that there are no phone numbers attached, no website, so it's really about promoting the business, not garnering cold calls off that sign.
Okay, thank you very much, Brian. Counsel Macklin?
Thanks, Kelly. Is this a one-seater? For lack of a better description?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, in fact, it is a one-seater, however, it is fully accessible.
Follow up?
Yeah, follow up.
It, it seems, well, does it have to follow the same rules and regulations about, you know, having walls that don't collapse on you and et cetera, et cetera? And having diaper changing and such that municipal washrooms typically have to follow?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The answer is yes, and those amenities have been included in this design.
In which ca, may I, sorry, in which case, um, how come? We should get Mr. Van Gruthy to do all our washroom, public washrooms, because it seems to be a lot cheaper than we do it ourselves.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to point out that the public washroom facilities we've built recently are a minimum of three holders or a three-person. They're certainly in, in the previous installations, we've had gender-specific washrooms and then an accessible component. So that's what I mean by three different units. And I will suggest to you that the value that I'm showing in this report, and I hope Mr. Van Gruthy doesn't think I'm giving away any trade secrets, however, this is much closer to his cost without any markup. And now having said that, I'm not suggesting there's a wild markup in this category, however, there is a reasonable markup. I would suggest to you that we've done three-station washrooms in the past at about triple this cost, which is by comparison to going out and, and pricing out pre-cast structures which are available, that's how they're priced as well. So, um, yes, it's very attractive and the actual cost to build is quite attractive. But it is, the point I'm trying to make, it's within the market of what you're purchasing, whether it be one, two, or three facilities.
Counsel Lloyd?
Is there proprietary information in this, or would this be a potential opportunity? We've talked about naming rights or other things like this for other companies to come forward in the community and have this type of a structure in other washrooms, spaces, I should say?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. It's actually a discussion I had with, with Mr. Van Gruthy when we were in the early stages and when the design was picked because I think many people agree it's attractive. I would suggest to you that I'm certainly going to continue discussions with Mr. Van Gruthy because we do have interest in this type of program. And so our approach is let's get one built, complete it, and then talk about the potential expansion of the program.
Yeah, Counsel Lloyd?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I recently had a phone call from a resident that was talking about the availability of a family washroom on our sportsplex grounds in off-hours. Currently, and, and just to describe the difference between a accessible washroom and a family washroom, a family washroom is something where a husband and a wife, for example, could go into that facility, aiding one person who would require help to use the facilities. The only accessible family washroom that we have is currently in a, in the complex itself of the sportsplex up on the grounds. And when we have events going on outside, the handicap washrooms that we have are not suitable for family use. Would there ever be a consideration for an additional family washroom potential up at our, our major sportsplex?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So I'd, I'd like to point out that council is aware that we have a program where we're actually upgrading our washrooms, and we've started at the sportsplex from an accessibility standpoint. And so we are considering those options as we move forward with how we're going to make the washrooms more accessible. I know at one point, um, council directed us to remove doors where possible, and we are looking at those options. We will continue to look at the options, not only from an accessible standpoint, but from a family perspective. The closest thing we really have today are the aquatic center change rooms, which even though the, um, the toilets themselves are not family-friendly, we have rooms within there, or cubicles, I think is a better way to describe it, that are intended for families to change.
Counsel Fisher?
Thank you, Brian. Just picking up on something Counsel Lloyd mentioned, it triggered a question. We're going to own this facility at the end of the day, is that correct?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that is absolutely correct.
Okay, and the design of the facility was prepared by somebody else. Is that design going to be proprietary to the person that prepared it, or is it going to be now something that we own? And the reason I'm asking, that may determine should we choose to replicate this facility elsewhere? Do we have a right to do it, or is the design proprietary to Mr. Van Gruthy?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I don't want to speak for Mr. Van Gruthy, however, he has paid for this design. And I really don't know if I want to put him on the spot today about answering that question, but maybe that's something we can talk about in the future as we look to expand the program. I can assure you that there are slight modifications we could make to this design and have drawn by, by others that we would be able to continue the program. It would just be worthwhile, the discussion, to see if we could work with the present drawing. We have not gone to that level of detail. And simply because at this point, we're really building one, seeing how it works out, and then we'll evaluate the program.
Anything else from council? Okay, it's just, I just wanted to thank Eric and for pursuing this, taking the initiative, because it is, it is something that does demonstrate, uh, community, community benefit and, and making sure that you're doing what you can to build this community, so I really appreciate that, so thank you. Recommendation that the Council of the Township of Center Wellington authorize Mayor and Clerk to enter into an agreement with the Van Gruthy team, Century Twenty-One Excalibur Realty Brokerage, Inc., to construct a public washroom as depicted in Schedule B of Report CES two thousand and eighteen dash zero four, dated February twentieth, two thousand and eighteen. And further, that the organization be permitted to display their commercial signage on the side of the public washroom in the form similar to that depicted in Schedule B of Report CES two thousand and eighteen dash zero four for a period of twenty years from the time of execution of this agreement. And further, that the Council of the Township of Center Wellington approve the capital expenditure of five thousand for the building permit fees, utility connections, and site works. We will for that recommendation. Counsel Ray Linn, seconded by Counsel Lloyd, all in favor? And that carries. Thank you. That's exciting. Okay, moving on to five point five, sole source award for self-contained breathing apparatus. Report from Dan, Managing Director of Corporate Services. Welcome, Dan.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. So we have some SCBA equipment, some self-contained breathing apparatus equipment that has reached its expected useful life. We had provided in the two thousand and eighteen budget to replace this equipment at an estimated cost of four hundred thousand dollars. And you can see a list of that equipment in, in my report. We have the opportunity to utilize a purchasing process that the city of Kingston recently went through, where they purchased a number of SCBA equipment through an RFP process, resulted in large discounts given the quantities that they were buying. And through our purchasing procedures, we're able to, to utilize that from a cooperative purchasing perspective. In addition to that, from a compatibility standpoint, this, this equipment that the city of Kingston purchased was the same, same brand SCBA equipment that we currently have. So from a compatibility, usability, inconvenience perspective, we wouldn't have to worry about that. But that, that is also one, something in our purchasing process that we're able to utilize, that we can ensure compatibility and, and use a sole source award because of that. As I mentioned earlier, we had budgeted four hundred thousand dollars for this equipment, and that was through various estimates and quotations we had received through the budgeting process that this equipment was going to cost. Due to the favorable pricing through the city of Kingston vendor, that equipment is coming in at just over three hundred and forty-six thousand dollars, which represents a savings to the township of almost fifty-four thousand dollars, which I think is great news. So with that, we are recommending a single-source contract award for the delivery of the SCBA equipment to A.J. Stone Incorporated Limited in the amount of three hundred and forty thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars exclusive of HST.
Thanks, Dan. We also have Brian here, if there's any additional questions on the apparatus. Counsel Lloyd?
I do have a question. It looks like we're reducing some of the numbers of the units that we have. We're increasing the length of time, but we are reducing the number of cylinders. If that's, I, I'm just a little wondering why that is.
Well, we also have our fire chief here, of course. Welcome, Brian.
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. We are not reducing any of the pertinent cylinders that are worn by the firefighters.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. And so in the report, it says the community services plans to replace, and then it says increase the number from thirty-eight to thirty-nine. The line below it says, replace seventy-six, which are thirty minutes long, to seventy-four, that are forty-five minutes long. And then four cylinders, sixty minutes, with two cylinders, sixty minutes. So I'm just asking if that's going to hamper what you do, or there's a reason why we're reducing them?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. No, they won't hamper or discourage the use at all of the SCBA cylinders. That would be the correct number. These cylinders, another way of looking at it is we're going from a thirty-minute cylinder to a forty-five-minute cylinder. So we'll, though the numbers may seem less, we'll actually have on-scene time much longer than we do now.
Any other questions from council on this one? Okay, read the recommendation that the Council of the Township of Center Wellington authorize a single-source contract award for supply and delivery of staff self-contained breathing apparatus SCBA equipment to A.J. Stone Company Limited in the amount of three hundred and forty thousand, three hundred and thirteen, exclusive of HST, to be funded as identified in Report COR two thousand and eighteen dash zero six. We will for that recommendation. Counsel Morris, seconded by Counsel Kitcher, all in favor? And that carries. Thank you, Dan. Moving on to five point six, an appointment of an agent for certain matters related to assessment. Dan?
Thank you, Mary Lynn. We have a report here to appoint Wellington County as the township's agent for certain matters related to assessment. In two thousand and seventeen, the county introduced this assessment-based management program where they intend to assist all lower-tier municipalities in Wellington County with all matters related to taxation assessment, as that is our number-one source of revenue here at the township and across the county. It's something that the county is taking a lot of interest in as their, their, their objectives with assessment relate to our, our matters and our objectives with, with respect to assessment. So it makes sense to work on this, on a collaborative approach. So this assessment-based management program promotes equity and fairness and transparency transparency across the assessment base across the county. They maximize the amount of revenue available for collection. And they're going to basically act to protect the assessment base. So, uh, um, we haven't had representatives at the assessment review board in the past and this will, um, basically provide that additional service where we're able to have a representative, um, across the county, but more specifically for, for ARB appeals specific to Center Wellington. The county would act on our behalf, uh, and, and provide that service to help us protect that assessment base. Uh, there were significant changes to the assessment review board rules regarding assessment appeals in two thousand seventeen. And because of that, we now must, um, have an appeals representative as well as a complaints representative. And, uh, this is basically being recommended to all lower-tier municipalities across Wellington County and, and, um, all, in discussions with all the municipalities across the county. Um, all municipalities are, are going on board with, with this approach in that we're recommending that the county's assessment-based management coordinator, which is Holly Adrowski, act as the appeal representative, uh, for the township and the county treasurer, Ken DeHart, act as the complaints representative. And what they will be doing is helping us in tracking these, um, ARB appeals. They will attend settlement meetings and hearing events. They'll prepare responses to statement of issues regarding, um, ARB appeals and they will attend building inspections and basically act on our behalf, um, when it comes to ARB appeals. And like I said earlier, that's something we haven't done in the past in terms of having representation at these ARB appeals. So it's, it's, it's showing our, um, our cooperation with the county and working with the county on, on a mutual beneficial, uh, area such as assessment. And, uh, it's providing efficiencies in that we don't have to have, uh, staff complement here at the township, uh, dedicated towards ARB appeals, which we currently do not have. So there's a, a bylaw attached to the report that is required to basically delegate this authority to, to the county to act on our behalf.
Thanks, Dan. Questions from council? Council Mike?
Um, it, the way I read it, there is no cost to this at all. It's one hundred percent upside, no downside?
Yeah, through you, Mary Lynn. Uh, there's no cost to us at all. Um, the, the county, um, hired that assessment-based management coordinator, I believe, last year at, at a hundred percent their cost and they're not, uh, flowing any cost down to the township. So it's, it's something they're doing for us, uh, with no charge.
Council Kitteris?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this process is if you want to challenge MPAC. Is that correct?
Through you, Mary Lynn. Um, it's, it's, for the most part, it's, it's large corporations that are appealing their assessment, saying that their, their assessment is, is unfair and they, they wish a, a review to take place on that.
Kind of follow-up.
Council Kitteris?
So for ordinary, um, constituents, does this have, uh, will this have a future tax increase?
Uh, through you, Mary Lynn. Um, the, the county did hire, um, a coordinator to assist in this regard in two thousand seventeen. So I guess to some extent that was a, a tax impact to everyone across the county. But I, I, I would have to, uh, I would have to discuss further operating budget impacts with, uh, the county treasurer to see if there's any other additional tax increases. But as far as I'm concerned, it's, it's, it's predominantly staff time with respect to managing appeals and, and attendance at appeal meetings.
Council McQueen?
Thanks, Kelly. Kind of as, as a follow-up to Stephen's question, um, I've gone to the ARB twice and there's never been representation there from either the township or the county. You, if, you suggested that this is intended for large corporations. Well, if I went again next year, would there be a chance that there would be the county representative there to fight it?
Uh, through you, Mary Lynn. Yes, um, I said that the, the, the process is predominantly for larger corporations, but you do have, um, individuals owning residents that do make it to the ARB process if they, um, there's, there's this other process called, uh, an, uh, request for reconsideration where you can go through and, and ask MPAC to reconsider your assessment, which is predominantly what happens from a residential perspective. But you do get, um, on some circumstances, residential homeowners go to the ARB and actually go through the ARB process. Right? So, so the, the thought is that, um, as you, as you indicated, we, we haven't had representation in the past due to, uh, um, resourcing, uh, but this is to, to alleviate that. So we do have representation.
Council Kitteris?
Reading this document, it, it takes almost two years. I was, uh, a little bit shocked to, uh, challenge your, uh, assessment. So this is when you actually have to go to court. Is that, 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 is that to this board? Is, because I've done the, uh, the challenge for the MPAC, but then I settled out. So this is actually if you go to the second stage and then you have to go to the corp, uh, the MPAC assessment board and then we would have representation? Okay. But, but we would be working against the resident, wouldn't we, as the representation?
Um, through you, Mary Lynn. It, yeah, the, one of the goals of, of the county's process is to be fair and transparent, but at the same time, we're looking out for the interests of the township and, um, and, and looking at what is a fair assessment, uh, for a property. And then they do have a number of different ways to, to determine what, what assessment is fair and that's really what the whole ARB process is about.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think a big driver of this was, um, for the county was losing a lot of assessment dollars to gravel pits. Okay, read the recommendation that the council attached with Center Wellington authorize, uh, appoint Vic, sorry. Appointment of a, uh, recommendation that the council attached with Center Wellington appoint the corporation of the county of Wellington to be the township's agent for certain matters related to assessment as outlined in Report COR Two Thousand Eighteen Dash Zero Seven. The council of the township of Center Wellington authorized the mayor and clerk to sign a bylaw related to this appointment. Recommendation moved by? Council Fisher seconded by? Council Van Leeuwen, all in favor? And that's carried. Okay, moving on to information items. We have, uh, Water Waste Water and Source Protection Annual Report and we have, uh, Dino here and Kyle. Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. We have Dino and Kyle to do questions, but I don't know how you want to take him, but do. I just called you both up, so you can figure it out. Is this your fir-, have you been in front of us before or is this your first? Don't we have some sort of proceed, initiation that he has to go through? We introduced him, but he didn't do a report. I thought there was some sort of initiation, but welcome. Okay, any questions from council? A pretty thorough report. Council Lloyd?
Thank you. Um, I just have a question about, sorry, one of the tests that have been done on, it's called Table Seven, Fergus Well One, and they're all dated two thousand and fifteen. Is it because we're not using that well very often for, it says Schedule Twenty-Three in Organics? And it's from two thousand and fifteen. I just wondered why that's so much older than all the other information.
Through you, Mary Lynn. Is this on? No, it's on. Uh, those are, um, every three, uh, sample results that are required every three years. So they were scheduled for this year, completed this year and will appear on next year's report.
Is there anything included in this report that council should, we should be concerned about?
Uh, through you, Mary Lynn. No. Uh, I, I was, um, wholeheartedly involved in, in reviewing these and producing these and, um, was very happy and impressed with the, um, the money that's been spent forward to improve the facilities, the results that have come from the facilities and the decisions made.
Good. Thank you very much. Council Van Leeuwen?
Thank you. Um, there's, I can't find it now because the report's quite large. Um, but there was something in here in regards to, uh, it was a deficiency to do towards, um, communication lost at one point between one, uh, whether there's a data system through and there's communication loss and there was a deficiency on information. When it's corrected, do we re have that information back or we've just corrected the, um, the loss of communication? Just curious how that plays out.
Uh, I, I think, and I wasn't here for the, oh, sorry, through you, Mary Lynn. I think for, uh, for last year's inspection, it was noted through their findings that, uh, there was a loss of communication and there was a data gap. So there was, um, required information that wasn't captured through, I'm gonna assume a power outage or, uh, equipment failure. I'm not sure which. With that said, uh, the recommendation was to establish, uh, a, a system whereby that is prevented and, um, again, that, that the money's been made available. Those remedies have been completed. There's a backup system in place now that, uh, for lack of a better term dovetails, um, the data that has been captured during those equipment failures with our regular operating data and puts it together at the end of the day. Yes.
Okay, thank you, Kyle. Um, and thank you, Dino. And please extend our thanks to Karen as well. Uh, Council Lloyd?
Dot, I didn't want you feeling left out, Kyle. Um, I noticed when you're doing a lot of the inspections that Center Wellington has not had a significant number of, uh, inspections, that there's been a lot in other, um, townships in Wellington County, but not ours. Can you explain why that is?
Yes, uh, certainly. Through you, Mary Lynn. Um, and, and that, uh, the, the numbers, as you see, kind of vary between in the different, in the different categories. So inspection, in terms of inspections, uh, in particular, uh, there were seven inspections completed in Center Wellington out of thirty-three, uh, sorry, out of thirty-four, uh, for the county. You're correct in that the, you know, half of those were actually conducted in Minto. And some of that, uh, has to do with the timelines that we were working under, uh, in, uh, Minto, which is a different, uh, a different sort of protection plan. So we actually had, uh, an April first, uh, of this year, three-year timeline. So we were focusing some efforts in Minto first to get some of that work done. Another, uh, po-, uh, point that, uh, relates to the inspections is we did a lot of the threat verification in Center Wellington through a consultant, um, which, uh, we also did that, that in a number of the other municipalities as well. So those aren't actually inspections, uh, because consultants is a, is a third party that's not appointed as a risk management official or inspector. A lot of that work was done, uh, in previous years and report was reported in last year's report. Uh, so we, we did, uh, what's called threat verification or activity verification on a number of, of properties through that consultant and don't have the numbers from two thousand sixteen in front of me right now, uh, but it was, it was in the hundreds of, uh, of sites there.
Great. Thank you very much. And I have, do have a recommendation here. Um, recommendation that the council attached with Center Wellington receive as information the following two thousand seventeen Water Waste Water and Source Protection Annual Reports, Township of Center Wellington Drinking Water System Annual Report, Township of Center Wellington Drinking Water System Summary Report, Elora Waste Water Treatment Plant Annual Performance Report, Fergus Waste Water Treatment Plant Annual Performance Report and the Township of Center Wellington Risk Management Official and Municipal Annual Report. Move for that recommendation. Council McQueen seconded by Council Fisher. All in favor? And that is carried. Thank you very much. And last but not least, we have a community delegation. Uh, we have Louisa, the Director of Children's Early Years Division, County of Wellington. Thank you so much for your patience. You see that we put you on the very last because we're saving the best for last. So welcome, welcome to Township Council, Louisa.
Yeah, thank you. And I do agree with you. The best is for last because it's about children. So if you are a grandparent and uncle parent, um, or a parent yourself, or if you've been a child, you'll understand, uh, and relate to this, uh, presentation. We're doing this across all of the, uh, local municipalities, uh, that are part of the County Wellington Service Delivery Area, which also includes the City of Welf. Um, and it's about the early years division and the new early-on programs that are happening. I'm just going to go over it briefly. Uh, there is a lot going on about childcare that I want to bring to your attention, so I do want to save some time for that. So just to remind you, I am part of Social Services with the County of Wellington and that is a division, uh, within, alongside housing and, uh, Ontario Works. And, and so we've changed our name Children's Early Years Division because we used to just, uh, plan and manage the childcare system, but now we're responsible for planning and managing the early year system. So, um, as of January first, um, the ministry decided that, um, they were going to take on all the Ontario Early Year Centers, Better Beginnings, Better Future Programs, uh, Childcare Resource Centers and Parenting and Family Literacy Centers. They were going to consolidate all of those into an early-on center and they've designated the county, uh, as the delivery agent for that, the planning and delivery agent. So nice downloading, uh, on our responsibilities. The reason is that they wanted to, um, you know, identify a couple of key goals which are in the presentation, which I know you have, so I'm not going to go over them one by one. But the nuts and bolts of it is, is that what they wanted to ensure is that these programs are going to be consistent across, uh, the, the service delivery area and that they have to be programs that are evidence-based and we also need to start evaluating them based on these outcomes here. So bottom line is, is that there's going to be a lot more consistency in what parents and, and caregivers are going to be receiving as far as the fam- family support. There's going, we're going to ensure that what they're actually doing can actually, um, drive towards some of the outcomes that the province is looking for. But the other part of it is, is that we have to ensure that they are also community-based and community-informed, uh, which is something that each one of the agencies that are currently delivering those programs right now, they do to some level. But again, they are, uh, more focused on actually delivering the programs. They don't have that higher arching birdside view going down saying, okay, exactly what is it that we're doing? Um, so what we've done is, um, while other, uh, CMSMs, which is what we're called, um, they have, um, terminated the contracts with any of the existing agencies, but we made the decision to keep that going. Uh, so for your community, it is, uh, CRC that's, uh, providing those services. We didn't want to break the trust that those families have with the certain agencies that are currently delivering the programs. And they are doing a lot of great work. So rather than rehashing everything and starting fresh with somebody new, um, let's already build on the connections and the trust that the families have and, uh, let's just make them better than what they already are is the approach that we took. Our service planning principles is something that I wanted to bring your attention. So the first of all, we say that they have to be high quality. We have to ensure equitable access, meaning that people are able to participate in, in the programs, uh, both in the early-ons as well as the childcare system and, uh, that they're equitably available. So ensuring that these services are equitably, uh, equitably available throughout the whole service system area. There are some areas within our, our service delivery area that have no services at all. So they're at the top of our priority list to say that they need something. Whether it's a satellite center or we have a really good virtual, uh, website that we're doing right now. So we're hoping that parents can connect to that wherever they are. Uh, and then they have an email address that they can actually communicate with us about some supports that they're needing. Uh, they need to be affordable as well. So for childcare, we have, uh, subsidies that are available to families and, um, for these early-on programs, there will be no cost to the family for any of the services that they're requesting. Core mandatory services that we have to do, they have to engage parents and caregivers. They need to support early learning and child development and it needs to make connections for families. Those are the core. That's what we have to do. And then we can also allow the agencies to do secondary and community services as well. I want to flip over to the early years, uh, services for a moment, um, because that is a, 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 a large part of our service plan. And there are some, uh, recent developments in Center Wellington that we want to bring to your attention. If you look at the overall system and we're looking at full-time, full-day spaces for birth to four, uh, we've known that, um, only the full-time, full-year spaces actually supports families to engage in the workforce and to engage in educational opportunities. As well, it's the only form that has, uh, been proven outside of the family to say that it actually, um, impacts a child's growth and development. It's very hard to do, uh, to do an assessment like that if, uh, the, the child is in and out of different, uh, areas. But if they're in the one location for a lengthy period of time, you can actually see how that experience, uh, impacts that child's life going forward. Back to equity, um, Wellington County so far only has seven percent of spaces for the birth to four population. So you take all of the children in, um, that are the ages from birth to four and we only have spaces in our community for seven percent. have spaces in our community for seven percent. In the City of Guelph, it is twenty-one percent. So we're sixteen percent for our whole, uh, delivery area. The province right now is stating that across Ontario, we have twenty percent, and they've introduced access to a hundred new, a hundred thousand new spaces to get that twenty percent to forty percent. I keep saying, you need to go back to where there's less than twenty percent and put your money there first before you go up to forty percent anywhere else. Um, and so we do have new funding that's available to us. Uh, so that's, we're hoping to build on our system with that funding. If you look at Centre Wellington in particular, uh, you're sitting at about ten point six percent at the current time. Numbers are good, but you have to delve even deeper. Uh, if you look at the number for infants, those are children between the, uh, birth and eighteen months old, we only have space for one point three percent of those children. So mothers that are willing, are wanting to go back into the workforce or needing, for the most part, to go back into the workforce, uh, or to participate in education, or if the child has a special need or a disability, and there's family relief that's needed, we basically only have six spaces for four hundred and fifty-five children. If you look at the number of toddlers that we have, eighteen to thirty months old, this is when most parents are returning back to work without a doubt. Uh, of the four hundred and forty children that you currently have, according to the 2016 census, you only have space for forty percent of those children. Oh, sorry, for forty of those children. Preschoolers is a little bit, uh, higher, uh, for the two hundred and ninety children that we have, we have eighty, uh, spaces for those children. So if you're a working parent and you're needing to go back to work, uh, you are relying on the informal childcare system that's not regulated at all. You're basically putting your child with a neighbour and hoping that everything goes well, um, but they're not checked, screened, regulated, or, uh, you know, up to date with the latest, um, uh, information that we know about child development. Further, we also look at, um, how much of, what's the vulnerability of the spaces that you do have? And Centre Wellington is in a unique situation where of all the spaces that are available, there's a hundred and twenty-six. Only twenty-five percent of those spaces are, uh, for a not-for-profit programme. That means they're, sorry, they're operated by a not-for-profit programme. The other ninety-five spaces, so seventy-five percent of the spaces that are being offered in your community are by one provider, a commercial operator alone. When there is infant toddler and preschools, uh, children, they heavily rely on a grant that we provide to them, and it's different from the grants that we provide to families for affordability, it is to the operation of a childcare centre. Um, the ministry now with a new funding, we have to prioritize the not-for-profits. So by nature of the way that, uh, the regulations and our guidelines are, are rolling out, these, uh, for-profit operators, um, you know, are more financially vulnerable. Uh, and if one person decides that they don't wanna do this anymore, you're down to thirty-one spaces, specifically fifteen toddlers and sixteen preschool spaces to serve the whole Centre Wellington Service Delivery Area. And that's not good news at all. Uh, I, you are, uh, extremely vulnerable, and you are, number one, severely underserviced, you're extremely vulnerable, and, uh, I would say that you're pretty much at a crisis point, uh, when it comes to childcare. And if you read any economic development, we do have the economic value of childcare, um, the ability for parents to rely on, um, stable childcare for their children, uh, really heavily impacts whether or not they can go to the workforce. And I would say a lot of families go to the workforce, but their mind is half on their job and half on their kids. So if they have some sort of security and reliance on, um, you know, the person that's caring for their children, chances are that they can actually, um, you know, participate more actively in the workforce and be, be a better worker, uh, for the organizations that they work for. Um, also, uh, Centre Wellington is actually, you know, responsible for almost thirty percent of the labor force and, uh, the companies that people are actually working for. Um, so what we've done is, there was a very short window of time, a last-minute, um, capital application for a community-based program that was sent out by the Ministry of Education. And so the county has, uh, with county council's, um, support, we did, um, send in an application to build a childcare centre, uh, built with a hundred percent provincial dollars, um, at Wellington Place. Uh, we cannot use that money to purchase land, so the county will be donating the land. Um, it will be located, uh, around, uh, the, the Wellington Terrace, uh, the, the Avoy Museum just behind, um, um, sorry, behind the museum. So it's kind of, it'll be circled around the terrace and the new hospital built. We've also done a lot of, um, communication with, uh, you know, the, the businesses that are gonna be right there, because we're looking at the possibility of, so you, if you're a nurse or a doctor and you're working at Grove's Hospital, um, and you need hours beyond the conventional hours of five o'clock for childcare, what would happen if we actually provided childcare until at least, um, you know, eleven-thirty, or do we look at a twenty-four seven? So that if a single mom is working a split shift or, uh, or they're working the night shift, they have their child like within five minutes away from them, and they can actually go on their break and have dinner or breakfast with their children, uh, which we thought would be an amazing thing to do. So those are the opportunities that we can create. Other than that, unfortunately, the childcare system is left up to the will of not-for-profit organizations or people who want to, um, open up a childcare centre. Um, but when, when, when a provincial application comes through, that's the time where we can step up and say that this is what we wanna do. And we've done that. Um, back to the child and family centers, uh, what we basically need to do is work with CRC, but we're doing in a community engagement strategy now about, you know, the different, uh, places and programs that they provide. That's in your slide deck as well, so I won't go through this one. Um, but why I am here today is to, uh, explain to you what we would like to do as far as a community engagement, uh, process, and what we've done is, um, went out and asked for council to be part of that. Uh, so we're asking for, uh, a council member or a staff member to be voluntold, to be part of this with us. Um, the community engagement is basically, we've hired a consultation company, we wanna sit down with somebody that really knows your community, uh, and talk to them about where do parents go? What are some of those things that we don't know from a service-level, um, perspective? Um, you know, what coffee shops or, you know, we've heard the recreation department is where you go, or, or the, the arena is where you go on Saturdays, that's where you catch most, most families, or there's this really informal toddler group that's happening, and fifty families go to that every Saturday at noon. Those are the types of things that we wanna know, because we wanna solicit the survey, um, to those families and get the, get the message out there. After that's completed and we get a picture of what each community is like, uh, we were gonna be starting an advisory group. Uh, it's ad hoc, it'll only be a couple of, uh, meetings, but to say, how are we gonna take what the community wanted and make it come to fruition? And that's what we would be expecting, um, the community resource ended to be very heavily involved in and working with them to say, how much more money do you need? Um, you know, where can we go, uh, in order for you to provide those services? So we're also asking for either a council member or, um, you know, a staff member, or if you know somebody in the community that would be very interested in that, um, we would like that person to come forward and, and be part of that process. I think I've done well. I'm within ten minutes, I think. So I'd like to, I can answer any questions.
That's great, thank you very much, um, Louisa. I think that's awesome, and we'll for sure get back to you on that contact person.
Okay.
That's, that's important that we, uh, make sure we connect that way. Um, questions from council on this? Important, important situation in our community. Council Lloyd, uh, well, and, um, the presentation you don't have in front of you, it has been sent out, yeah, so you're receiving. Was that your question or another one? Okay, Council Lloyd?
Louisa, did I understand you to say that the funding has already been secured for the bricks and mortar?
It is not, it's an applica- it's an application that we've submitted. Uh, so we're just hoping that, uh, each one of us needed to submit an application to the ministry, and they go through a decision-making process as to which, uh, which capital bills are actually going to be approved. If ours is approved, then that's great news, um, but it may be that they don't approve it.
Yeah, Council Lloyd?
So should they not approve it? Um, does the county have a fallback position? Because clearly we are underserviced in, um, Centre Wellington, um, and elsewhere, probably in the county. Is there other potential ideas that are coming forward?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, uh, the only potential that we have is when there is a, a, a request forward, uh, sorry, an application process that we can do this. Um, that's what we have control over. Other than that, uh, we do solicit to other, um, agencies that provide childcare to say there is a need, um, if you want, you know, or you might find this attractive. We do give them the numbers to say, if you open up a childcare centre in this area, you know, you would be, you would be full. Uh, however, if there's no uptake on that, we can't force someone.
Council Kitteris?
I just wanted to thank you for making this presentation about, uh, the service that's, uh, required. I was just wondering, um, are there new regulations by the province, uh, for private, uh, daycare that, like, are there more regulations, or is there any way of promoting more of that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, we have started a deserve it, demand it campaign just to, um, let families know the difference between licensed or regulated and, uh, non-licensed or unregulated childcare, just so that they understand the difference of that. Um, and so through that, where we've seen some leverage is in home childcare, where families that were using, uh, a caregiver for their children in their home, um, in, in the person's home, they have said, we'd like you to become, uh, contracted by the licensed agency, which, which is, we have a licensed agency with the County of Wellington. So we've seen some leverage that way, some people have come on from the informal side over to the unlicensed, uh, or to the licensed side. There are no regulations, uh, for the informal sector. Uh, the only thing the ministry has done was they decreased the number of children that they can take care of. Um, previously, if you had, uh, if you were unlicensed, you could actually take care of more children than if you were licensed. So they've reversed that. Um, but other than that, they can care up to five children, uh, in their home, and no one even needs to know that they're doing it.
Council Kitteris?
Um, is that data in that presentation there, like the, all the other private spaces? Because that's sort of like, is what you say that we are lacking all this space, but are you, have you collected all the private, unregistered? Because they might actually be taking all the spots.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, we do not, we go with the, the ministry uses forty percent that of the, of the population of children that you have, you should aim to have space for forty percent. Um, and we're at ten percent. Because they're informal, we don't know, uh, who they are and what they're doing. I would say that they're forced to do that. However, we believe in the license system, we believe that if someone's looking after someone else's home, uh, child, and is taking money in for that, uh, it, it, it becomes a business, and they need to, they need to be regulated, they need to have police checks, they need to ensure that, you know, they're, they're taking good care of those children and to have somebody, they need accountability is basically what I'm saying, like, if you walk into anything, um, to do with your pets or whatever like that, you know, there, there's some sort of a valid certificate, certificate of that person that's actually caring for your animal, and we're saying the same thing should be, you know, there for children. If somebody's caring for children, somebody should be making sure that they're, they're taking care of them well.
Council Morris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Louisa, I wish you very much good luck for the, uh, application for funding from the province. Um, and I, I do know from past experience working with the CRC, they do, do excellent work. The unfortunate thing is that they pretty well are embedded within schools or other facilities, they have no property of their own, I don't believe. Um, and so my question though is, one chart that you threw up there was, um, the newborns, you, you have space for six, but the need is much greater, and also for toddlers, you, you, you can address forty, and I think it's four hundred and forty or something like that. Is, is that due to a lack of, um, established facilities, or is it lack of staff, trained staff, or is it a combination of both?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I would say primarily it's a lack of established businesses and opportunity for people, um, you know, or the will for people to come and open up spaces. Um, with CRC, they do rent from the schools, and a lot of their programs are school-based. Um, so it is, it's expensive, it, it's an expensive, uh, operation to, to facilitate. Uh, you need a building, you have to have, you may have to meet about a hundred and sixty requirements, there's legislation. You also need registered ECEs, and there is a shortage of registered early childhood educators as well. And so the ability to attract somebody in to make fifteen dollars an hour, um, is, is difficult. So, uh, we say it's a little bit of both, but you need to establish the business first, and then you look at hiring the people. Um, so it's, uh, primarily that.
Council Mackway?
Thanks, Kelly. Um, I think I understood you said that you have a facility whereby unlicensed caregivers can now be licensed. And so is that well-known? Because I didn't realize it, and now, mind you, I'm not in, in the market for it either, but I, I mean, if, you know, Mrs. Smith down the road who takes care of five children knew that she could be licensed, um, what does it mean to her? What are restrictions? Does it up her cost to the parents, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? Like, why, why would they not do that if it makes a big difference?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I think it, it's, it's, we have a marketing campaign that we have to roll out in 2018. Um, we, we just, uh, with the new one hundred percent provincial funding that we, uh, just received, we did create one additional home childcare advisor position. That allows us to expand our program. And so now we can start recruiting, uh, people to say, you know, we're here and we want, um, you know, you can actually access this service. We've done that with parents that are full-feeing, you don't need to be subsidized in order to, um, to, to access a provider that's contracted with a licensed agency, so we've been getting that word out. Um, but now we're wanting to recruit more providers. Uh, so we are, um, using Twitter, Facebook, uh, social media to basically say, come on, uh, you know, come onto the program. We, uh, Wellington County is actually known by the ministry to have the optimal home childcare agency in that there is no additional cost to the family to access this, and there's no additional cost to the provider. If we were a for-profit or a not-for-profit agency that was delivering home childcare program, you would be, uh, the, the parents would be paying a higher fee and the providers would be getting a lower fee, or the providers would be paying four thousand dollars a year or, you know, something like that, um, to actually be part of this agency. This is at no cost to the provider, no cost to the family.
Thank you very much for the presentation, Louisa. It's good for us to have that information. If there's any way that we can help, um, to get the word out, uh, any communication that we can do, just please let us know.
Yes.
If we can use our communications here to get the word out to people in Centre Wellington, um, just let us know what we can do to help.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thanks for waiting till the last item on the agenda. You have your full evening yet. And the last item on the agenda is a motion to adjourn. Council Kitteris, second by, Council Van Loon, all in favor? And that's carried, we're adjourned.